Preliminary matter, this is Harry Kubetz, Chair of Luenenberg Public Library Board of Trustees. I will do a roll call to confirm that all members and persons participating in the agenda are present can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Laura?
Just joined.
She just joined and she's muted and so is Maya.
Okay, sorry. You're you let me know when they I don't see them.
Here.
Laura's here.
Okay, so Laura here, Bob.
Yes.
Dick?
Here.
Kate?
Here.
Donna?
Here.
Maya?
Here.
Great, thank you. And we have Muir and Michael Ray, I don't think has joined us yet.
Not yet.
Okay.
He said he'd be on in a couple of minutes.
Great, so a good evening. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over the Luenenberg Public Access Channel and the and this meeting of the Luenenberg Public Library Board of Trustees is being conducted remotely. The town of Luenenberg, a response to COVID-19, is currently following the guidance from the Luenenberg Public Luenenberg Board of Health Massachusetts Department of Public Health and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread. And town facilities are currently being operated under restrictions in accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Although, public meetings are being conducted remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the town website on the COVID-19 Information Center page, access to the town manager's webpage allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting of the Luenenberg Public Library Board of Trustees is being convened by Zoom as posted on the town's website identifying on the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference accordingly. Please be aware that other folk may be able to see you and please take care not to screen share your computer inadvertently. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We're now turning to the first agenda meeting, first item on the agenda. Before we do, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. The chair will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called further. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes for any response. Please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to communicate with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, we'll call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken to this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So with that, I'd like to please go to the first agenda item. Is there any public comment? With no public comment, I would like to go to the next agenda item, which is approval of the minutes of January 21st, which I believe Bob has distributed to everybody. I do have some comments, but we'll give everyone a chance to read through and then we can go through everyone's comments. Muir, are you with us? Or you're frozen on my screen?
I am still here.
Okay, your video is frozen. Everybody could hear that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And I assume you guys are going through the minutes, or have you all done it?
Have done it.
Okay, well, we'll hold until the last person is ready.
Okay.
We're ready?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so any comments?
Maybe a capital N.
Any particular place?
You want to be really picky under board comments. Dick signed up for candidate. Then it says period and then noted that it was a great success. Do we want noted to be capital N? It's very picky. It's so picky, Bob.
Oh, yeah. I'll change it to he noted.
Okay.
Where where was this?
At the very, just before the adjourning, the board comments. Lowercase, or he's going to put a he.
Yeah, I changed it to he noted.
Okay.
Uh, this is Dick in the in the one where Muir submitted the continuity of operations outline plan. In the second sentence, I'm not sure what the original was because I changed it, but the second, this document lists processes for townwide operating during the pandemic or any other emergency situation.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Catch. Okay, so I have a few. Bob, let me know when you're ready.
Go ahead, Harry.
Okay, so under public comment at the very beginning, second bullet point, these are all minor stuff. Harry read the requirements for remote meeting. I suggest either for a remote meeting or for remote meetings.
I'll make it plural.
Okay. The fifth bullet point under the director's report. I think that the word spring should be capitalized, meaning season.
Not unless it's at the beginning of a sentence.
Okay, so forget that one. The third bullet point from the bottom of the director's report, where you talk about a go pro.
Yeah.
It's should be capital G O, no space, capital P R O.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
And then under board comments before adjourn. And Dick, you correct me if I'm wrong, but when we talk about said his initial indications from the state are positive, is are we a Commonwealth or we a state?
Both.
We're Commonwealth.
Yeah, with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
We're Commonwealth.
Okay, so.
In general, talking, we are one of the 50 states. We don't differentiate most of the time.
Okay, so that was it, Bob. These are great minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as revised amended.
All in favor, Laura?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dick?
I.
Kate?
Yes.
Donna? I'm sorry, Donna, I didn't hear you.
Hi.
Thank you.
Yes.
Maya?
Hi.
And I, so unanimous, thank you. Great job, Bob, as always.
Thank you.
So with that, could we please go on to the director's report, Mr. Director?
I've got a question first.
Of course.
Muir, you said you put the put them in the Google Docs folder. I don't know what that is and where it is. Are you going to show it on the screen?
I will show the my report on the screen, yes. And then you and I should connect, make sure you get access to that before our next meeting, certainly.
Yeah, I just expected to print them or, you know, get them out of the email, so yeah, I guess we better do that.
Yep. All right, so here's my report. How's that for size? Okay. All right, FY21 budget. February is the eighth month. So we are two thirds, just about two thirds of the way through the year. You can see heating and electricity certainly are beginning to catch up to that run rate. Salaries are about where we would expect. Particularly with one vacancy and having carried a second vacancy for three months.
Hey, Muir, I'm sorry. Michael Ray just let me know he's waiting.
He is waiting, of course, as soon as I.
Sorry about that.
That's, yeah, a good reminder. Hold on, let me stop sharing for a second, let him in. And pull back our report here. All right, there we are, FY21. Salaries as expected. Yep, library materials getting closer too. Obviously, that's one of the places where we have a bunch of annual invoices that come up in the springtime. Did some petty cash reimbursement for our mailings. We'll make some custodial supply purchases at some point very soon. Yeah, no major major hiccups. Any questions from you guys about the numbers there?
Any any quick update on what's happening with the with the cleaning, with the custodial services townwide? Is that impacting you at all?
Kit's been bringing, has brought a few more potential vendors through the building. No impact yet.
Okay.
So. And that that gets paid out of the building maintenance line that's in the DPW. So, you know, it's it's a cost that's split across departments. So it won't it won't impact our appropriated funds.
At $300 is safe.
Yeah, 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 totally. The custodial supply line is just is kind of supplementary for us anyways, because the you know, the cleaning crew generally brings their own supplies that are provided by the town. You know, Kit has his own budget for things that he uses. This line typically is is used for things for, you know, Bill Tyler comes in as part of the tax work off program and he often does custodial type work, so we've got like a mop for him and that was purchased with this line in the past fiscal year, so things like that, you know, new mop head for that, some cleaning supplies, you know, supplementary things anyways.
Hey, Muir, I'm sorry, Michael Ray, can you hear?
He is muted. Yes.
Okay, listen, just before you joined, I just want to let you know the board voted to have you be personally responsible for any budget deficits to the library and we that was unanimously approved, so we want to thank you.
Thank you, Michael Ray.
And I will get spending immediately.
That'll teach you to be late.
Yeah, that so FY21 is going well. Certainly, we were we were trying to be conservative as possible in the first part of the year, not knowing what the future held. And we're at a place where we will begin to make sure that we expend the money that's been appropriated to the library, so. FY22, obviously, tonight's a big night there. We've received preliminary budget, met with the town manager, submitted our requests back. And tonight, we'll meet with the finance committee. I will meet with the finance committee and present to them some information about our requests and hopefully they will work their magic and and help us get everything we need. Not that we're in a bad spot right now with the preliminary budget back from the town manager, but never hurts, never hurts. Staff updates, we did in the past month, finish the annual report for the town. The book, the report that comes out in the annual report book. So that's nice to be done with. Staff is excited about the strategic plan. Some volunteers to participate in the focus groups, so that'll be great. They are looking forward to our upcoming virtual events too, which they've done a very good job of filling out the schedule on. Debbie, Ms. Debbie Maribath, sorry, Ms. Debbie, Lydia and Susan have done a really good job scheduling things for the for the next couple of months. Maribath's actually working on a inventory of library materials, so she goes, she's going through all of our physical materials and scanning each item that is on our shelves. So when she's done, she will have, she will be the first person in a very long time to have touched everything in our collection. And so that this is kind of like a one of those maintenance projects that doesn't happen as regularly as it should, but will will should really positively impact the user's experience. It will enable us to delete things that have not been seen since at least when we migrated over to Evergreen, which was at least eight years ago. And there there's a good number of items that are in our catalog but have not been seen for a while, so when she is finished with the inventory, we'll be able to delete those things and it won't appear that we have a bunch of old items if people are even looking for them. And then when they, when people come to the library looking for those items in our catalog and they can't find them, that problem will will hopefully be just about fixed. So very exciting for library librarians, but maybe not all that exciting for you guys. It will be a good project to have done. And obviously, a lot of work that Maribath's put into it, so.
Hey, Muir.
Yes.
How many hours do you think that took her?
Ooh, good question. She she works very quickly. She's been working on it since about Christmas time, but not, you know, every hour of her day. I would guess obviously, just a ballpark, you know, she's spending an hour to two or three. Most days she's there, she's there, you know, three to four days a week for maybe 10 weeks now, so. You know, a couple dozen hours for sure. It's a lot of a lot of work. Obviously, you know, we've got 80,000 items or something like that. You know, books, DVDs, audiobooks. So it's yeah, a lot, a lot, a lot of work. That's just one of the things that we that that staff takes care of at the library, so. Program update. The Beanstack winner reading program for January is concluded and was a great hit. And they are planning to work up their next challenge. It's been really successful having these reading challenges for 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 readers. It is certainly, you know, predominantly children participating, but they're they're definitely teens, they're definitely adults tracking their reading minutes. Dick is one of them. It looks like it's it's great fun to do it that way and and it's really interesting to know how much you're actually reading. So that, yeah, it's a cool thing to do and that we've got, we've had some great kind of raffle basket prizes for for randomly selected participants. As I mentioned, there's a plethora of virtual programs coming up. You got to mention the armchair travel programs, which is one of our collaborations with other local libraries. Great time of year to to be traveling. And those should be good fun. There's the short discussion group that that Dick loves. And, you know, has small turnout so far, but hopefully we'll expand and it's a it's a great use of canopy for us. That free photography course from Nick DePasquale, who offered that that course last winter time, that was a great hit. We had 18 or 19 participants for six weeks last year and I think 10 people signed up for the virtual version this this time, and I think it's for libraries he's offered it through and by far, we we offered, we we had the most people sign up for from our community. So that's great. Lucky to have him doing that again. The garden, the artist's garden program that happened last night, I think, brought in 65 people, over 100 people had signed up, so we're still seeing that kind of drop off from, you know, people registering to people actually getting into the program, but still 65 people for a Zoom program. You know, the gardening program topic was a great hit this time of year, so fantastic news there. Teen take home kits have been gaining popularity as well. Susan's doing a great job with that and she's also done a free video game program too that's coming up. The STEM programs, again, great, great, great impact. The kids who sign up get a take a take home kit with all of the materials to make whatever the project is. They get Zoom session with the instructor. And at the end, they've they've learned some science, technology, engineering, math type skills, concepts, and we actually expanded the number of people who can sign up and take home kits. So we're spending a little more money but per program, but I think it'll be well worth it to accommodate the demand.
What's the number? How many do you sign up?
We're up to, we can sign up, sign up 14 or 15 now per session and it was initially 10 or 12.
Okay.
So we added a few, it's, you know, based on the demand. So the number of people, there've been a number of waitlist people signed up the last few months and and trying to get them in, making sure that everybody that wants to can can do it. We've got got that funding and and it's had had really positive impact so far, so I thought that was a good choice. As expected, security camera upgrades have been postponed a little bit, so now hoping to get that done the first week of March. Again, that's funded by the Friends Endowment. Thank you, Friends. The other thing, big thing for the building that's that's happening besides the cleaning, the cleaning the cleaning beds, the request for proposals for the carpet project is being drawn up. The architect is scheduled to visit the library to take some pictures to help finish up that request this coming Wednesday. And that would be a good thing to move forward with while we can. Phone system also needs some attention, so I'm working on getting some estimates and getting somebody in to fix you know, one of the one of the handsets on the on the front desk means to be replaced. But there are also some, our second line is also a little fuzzy, so we'll work on that and get that fixed up. Yeah, Harry.
You know, whose budget is that?
That one, I
It's a bit rhetorical. I would have thought it's DPW, is that not?
I'll have to talk to Kit about it. In the past, when we were last paying for phone maintenance, which it's been a little while since we've had like a maintenance contract with any any companies for the phone, the Friends were actually paying for it. So, yeah, building maintenance.
I would contend that that's sort of a required item and it should be part of.
Yeah, or maybe the IT department. So, you know, I've got, I I've contact, I've been in contact with Steve and, you know, I haven't talked about the phones with Kit yet, but, you know, I will, just to make sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Sure. Obviously, the reopening, you know, vaccines are progressing and big news today with the the crashing of the system, but we'll we'll continue to monitor guidance from the state. The library specific guidance is not not changed for us at this point. Yes, Harry.
Muir, I'm sorry. I I read somewhere recently that, I don't know if it was Town or Commonwealth, it has gone from 25% to 40%. Does that not, in terms of capacity, does that not apply to the library?
It doesn't really impact us. You know, we have the the browsing appointment still, which is, you know, just the most efficient way for us to kind of control the things that we need to control. And we still have the the number of slots at 10, which was below the 25%, and obviously, that's below the 40% too. We can add a slot if if there's demand, but it's the demand is not there. And so instead of running additional browsing appointments and taking time away from when we can do curbside, we're keeping the browsing where it is, that, you know, the two browsing slots per per day available for up to 10 people at a time. And then the rest of the time that staff is in the building, we're doing curbside pickups, which is still more popular.
Okay.
Any other questions for me? Okay. That's my rather short report for this month, knowing that we've got our finance committee presentation coming up, so. Let's see, what's the next agenda item?
It's still you.
Still me.
Strategic plan committees, subcommittee update.
Excellent, yes. So strategic plan, we've met a couple more times with Barbara, taken the last two Wednesdays off from meeting with her so that we can finish up the invitation letters for our focus group and the list of people we are going to invite to participate in that, which has been done. I've got the letters printed off right next to me, actually. Ready to be fold, signed, folded, stuffed into envelopes, stamped and mailed. So hopefully, I'll get that done tomorrow and get those invites out so that people can get back to me about participating there. We are planning to have the focus groups first week of March, so the time is getting short there, March 3rd, 4th and 6th. Let's see. Other updates, blanking on what else. We've got our, we've kind of been working on our survey. The subcommittee has has each taken the survey. We've got a little feedback, so we're ready to discuss that. We're planning to send that out after the focus group so that there's enough time to respond to whatever data is gathered during the focus group discussions, in case there's there are questions we want to ask as follow up to that, to that that data that's gathered. And you have, trudging along, Barbara's been working on an outline for the actual report. That will be the document after after all the data is gathered and then analysis is done. And so we're planning to meet with her this coming Wednesday and we'll probably take a look at that outline. We'll discuss the survey and make final preparations for the focus groups. I did also reach out to Hannaford. Diego is the store manager in Luenenberg and they were very generous and they gave us eight $25 gift certificates to use as incentives, kind of for randomly selected participants in the focus group meeting, so I went to pick those up today. Didn't get to talk with Diego. He was on a conference call, but, you know, pick those up and that that donation is coming through the Friends so that they have a, you know, a tax tax number that they work of. And it's always good to involve the Friends anyway, so extra, extra reason to do that, but we'll have those and we'll draw those winners after the the third focus group meeting. If people can't make those meeting times, we do have a backup plan to have at least one potential session the following week, or if we don't have enough people commit to participating, we will do individual interviews with a number of people and ask very similar questions, kind of key people who who likely would would give us a good representation of kind of the same things that's that might be discussed at the focus groups, but obviously, we'd rather have more people involved and more voices participating. Diversity is always, always helps with resilience, so. I think that is our strategic, looks like Dick's preparing to say something that I missed.
This is this is Dick through the chair to Laura and Maya. This is, this is Dick through the chair to Laura and Maya, just wondering if either of you had. Received a notification that you were off the waiting list and had been signed up for one of the, uh, one of the conferences. I, 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 I received today, uh, for March the fourth, so. Keep a, keep an eye on your emails, maybe you'll, uh, maybe you'll be next.
Okay, thanks.
So, Muir, you're done with the strategic plan, subcommittee update?
Looks like it, yeah.
Okay, um, I was not able to attend the last friend's meeting. Was there anybody besides Muir that was there? Okay, Muir, sorry.
Yeah, so friends met, uh, skipped their January meeting and met, uh, February. Uh, they, they discussed their plans for the website and social media, uh, communication. Kind of updates and revisions and. They are concerned about, you know, time commitments and, and efforts there, so. I think they, their plan was Sue Ahern was not at the meeting and, and she had volunteered to, to work on like a Facebook page for them. And they, they were leaning towards. Focusing on just that for now, uh, maybe some small revisions to their webs, that their presence on our, on our website. Which is easy to accommodate, but also just focusing on, on Facebook, uh, for, just to start somewhere. They also discussed a little bit, uh, book sales. Continuing to do the, the curbside, uh, book sale, is that what we're calling it? The book, the book carts that are outside our front door that have been rather popular, pop up book sales, right? Man. I didn't, it's not feeling good for, for the finance committee and my brain feels like it's three different places at once. So pop up book sales, they, they want to keep doing that, uh, they want to try and put out. So what they've done, they've put, they've actually gone through. The majority of the boxes that we have in storage and put them out for at least part of, you know, at least a week, um, as part of book sales. Um, and then pack them back up, uh, so that they, they're kind of talking about whether they wanted to get rid of those. Keep them for a bigger book sale, do a bigger book sale, uh, under a tent maybe. Or continue with pop ups and maybe recycle those boxes one more time and then discard them to better, not Better World Books, but. Discover Books, I think is what it's called, uh, that you, the company that usually comes and picks up, uh, all the books after their book sales. Uh, they're, they're, what they kind of seem to be. Going with is continuing the pop ups. Sorting as they put them out again, uh, what seems likely to not sell. Uh, and then putting those off, uh, and, and getting them picked up by Discover Books. And then cycling through the ones that, that may have, may have a chance, um, it's, you. Generally fairly easy to make that distinction between what, what might catch someone's eye and what probably won't. So, they felt pretty good about that. Um, they are going to, they've invited for their next meeting. Representatives from the Lunenburg Skate Park five oh one C three, I think there were five oh one C three. To come and give a proposal about collaborating on a fundraiser sometime. In late spring or summer, so that they'll be discussing that at the next meeting. That, having a representative present some, some ideas and discussing those ideas then. We discussed, uh, whether we'd be able to use the LaTarte Poetry Fund this year and we are going to proceed with. With doing that, so we are, we are in the midst of planning some poetry events. Virtual poetry events, um, for April, um, and that'll be a great thing to, to begin to, to offer the town every, every poetry month. I think that that. That was. Those are the substantive updates from the meeting. Yeah, I can't think of anything else. It was, it was, it was actually a relatively short meeting.
Good, good job, Muir.
Thank you.
Now, now I remember, now I remember being.
You were actually there, yeah. I think I was too.
That, there's, there's, they're so riveting that sometimes I just drift off, maybe, I'm not sure.
It's a, it's a tough time of night to be meeting and, and not drifting off.
Well, thank you for that update.
You're welcome.
We've done a really good job on time, guys.
Yeah, we have.
I, I know that Michael Ray wanted to read some of his poetry.
That is category false, by the way. Not true at all.
Are there any board comments? Oh my gosh.
Wow, quiet night.
Geez, um, any other business or any public comment?
I want my vaccine.
Yeah.
But I don't want to spend another day trying to get it.
It, it is so random. Because the first time I went on, I got nowhere and then I ended up at a CVS in Palmer, Mass. But they didn't have anything, so it just kicked me over into Connecticut.
You went to Connecticut.
Shot and at that time Connecticut was allowing it. But then they stopped, I could have gotten my second shot there, but there were many openings at the Springfield Mall. Which is a mass vaccination site and that allowed, I said, allowed Jeremy and one of his other teachers to come and get a shot, so we ended up going out there. Yesterday, I guess that was, so, and it, you know, an hour and fifteen minute drive, but. It, it was, it was slick and it was worth doing, so I mean, obviously for those people who are now, I think part of the thing was that sixty-five and over is a large group. Okay, and then they added in people with comorbidities. And it, you know, the state has not done a, a very admirable job. Unfortunately, so hang in there, you'll, you'll, someday you'll click on and you'll be surprised.
Will be, I'll be amazed, I'll travel. I go out of state.
Yeah, the problem is, once that, once they started to do that, both, both, I think, New Hampshire and, uh, and Connecticut stopped the.
Right.
Stop that, so.
I know New Yorkers were going into Springfield and so anyway.
We've got a few minutes. Do you guys all have the Zoom link for the finance committee?
Uh, yeah.
I emailed it this afternoon, I think it was this afternoon.
What, what time is the meeting? Is it seven thirty?
Their meeting starts at seven, uh, so we could certainly pop over, you can pop over now. My, my presentation is seven thirty, scheduled for seven thirty, so. I don't think we, we need, we don't need to be there before then.
Okay.
Wow, it's only eight minutes after seven.
Yeah, we've got a few minutes.
We did go fast.
Spoiling you guys. The, the expectations for next month are going to be high.
I won't have to take many notes.
Total warp speed minutes.
Um, so, uh, I think we're done. Any other comments from anybody? All right, well, I would like a motion please to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. I can.
Who, uh, seconded that?
I seconded it.
Was that Kate?
Um, okay, Laura.
Hi.
Bob.
Hi.
Nick. I, Kate.
I.
Donna.
Hi.
Maya.
Hi.
Harry, hi, unanimous, good night everyone, thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Good, good night.
Hi. Huh? I have a quick question. Were those your cats that are disappeared?
No.
Okay.
No, we only have one cat here, Kyle and Jovi's.
Okay, I saw that and I thought, oh no.